You know, that's good. We'll do whatever you need.
I know, I'm late sometimes.
Guess what?
Why don't I get a whole list together and...
I got it, I got it.
Probably use an aerial. I'll show them in the aerial. And that way you can see where the property lies.
Yeah. Plug it all into GIS.
Hey Bill, how are you?
Steve, how are you?
Not bad.
That wasn't a totally positive response.
Actually, you're right, that wasn't a totally positive response. Things are great.
Got it. I'll get an email out to that guy down on the sidewalk here, too.
Oh, okay.
We pulled it. Or Sarah's been pulling information from the CTP.
Ready? All right, guys, ready, Bill? All right, welcome to our November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, we've got several items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of this item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Suzy, do we have any public comment cards on item number one?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so you will sound that agenda.
Our first item this evening is a discussion of Equestrian Stakeholder Group. Ms. Courtney Spriggs.
So I wanted to get discussion and comment from you all about the mission of the Equestrian Stakeholder Committee. It's under our strategic goals as preserving what makes Milton unique, but I wanted further direction from you all. Do we want it to promote tourism or education? Do we want to address the people who own horse farms? Do we want to address their needs? Are there certain things we want to address? We have advice from Ken on starting the committee sort of the same way through resolution like we did the Arts Council. And so we'll be doing that. And Councilmember Coons and a potential committee member have submitted a draft of a resolution that's in your packet.
And, you know, I think we all agree this is something that is very important in Milton. You know, it's interesting, there's only a few percent of our citizens actually live on property or own horses or whatever, but, you know, it's still a big part in the field of Milton. Sometimes, you know, in our endeavors to do the right thing and protect our citizens and do what the majority of citizens want and listen to our citizens, we've got to be careful that we don't forget about the small minority that has the biggest impact on the look and feel of our area and what most people like about living here. So this is very, very important. And so, you know, we want to look at that resolution and open up for discussion on this.
Yeah, I'll talk about this in a sec. I thought, you know, as I gathered some thoughts from some members of the community that had horses or that, you know, had equestrian-based land, the questions that they had, obviously, they just want to be able to provide input not only on not only on their land use, but as well as businesses that they can come up, ideas they can come up with or ventures or nonprofits or events, things of that nature. And so modeling this after the Arts Committee, as we talked about, obviously, we want to allow things to be at-large because not every area of the community has equestrian property, but that way we can all have someone that can make an impact or at least have a recommendation or an idea, as well as non-voting members who may also want to participate beyond an initial voting board. So, and then, of course, as, after we do that, if people drop off, they'll be able to govern themselves. So I thought that was possible as well. So trying to keep it as general as possible, I thought that the mission should be, you know, those initiatives for exactly the reasons the mayor said. I think it's a small amount of people, but a lot of us love what we see, or it affects everybody. So I think that whatever we can do to help them provide a revenue objective to stay on the land, promote that equestrian aspect. Tourism is fine because tourism goes with the equestrian. Events are big with the equestrian. Branding is big, business, trail rides, things of that nature. So those are things that I had in mind.
Okay. Anybody else? You know, and not only, you know, as you mentioned, supporting their business and whatnot, but I think it's equally as important. Regardless, that's a tough question. It's tough to make money.
Yeah.
So even about supporting business stuff, it may not make the big difference. We also just in general need to support, to support them and make it easier for them to, you know, be in the, or just to have horses and land and landowners like that, too. So we can over-regulate some things sometimes, and this is going to drive people out. So I think we need to be comfortable with that. Bill?
Who would be the staff member to be associated with this council committee?
That hasn't been determined yet.
I think originally we were talking with Courtney, right?
Well, we're gonna, I want to see what, how the, how this group starts to form, what it starts to do, make sure it's the right fit.
I believe we're all, is everybody on board with that? Everybody having an equal appointment on the, you know, at-large person to represent? Any talk on that? Are we talking, you know, seven members, one from each elected official? Any more discussion on that? Ken, you talked a little bit about just the formation, is that a good number?
Yeah, everything that I saw with respect to my discussion put this in line with what I believe is a good practice. I was comfortable with it from that standpoint. I had a couple of questions that I had raised with staff, and I think they're working to address those, so.
And Ken, have you looked over this proposed resolution?
I believe I have.
Sounds like me. And I think, Matt, you mentioned assistance help, too, that may possibly be, who was that?
That was Tamra Jurgis as well. She lives on the corner of Paymanville and Birmingham.
Anybody, anything else, or would the next step be choosing board members or pass a resolution, choose board members or members and then work on bylaws?
The next step would be adoption of the resolution. That's the actual act of creation, and then you sort of fill in the blanks after that.
Okay. So if anyone wants to look at that and bring it up on your future meeting. If I go with that? Okay. Next, we have a staff.
Great, I have more. Great, thanks. You're not done with me yet. So next is my staff report. I know we normally...
Suzy, do you want to, one second. Suzy, do you want to at least announce that?
And we have no public comment. Staff report, community outreach and engagement, Ms. Courtney Spriggs.
And you said there's no public comments, Suzy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. So to touch on, just this past weekend and a couple of past events, of course Crabapple Fest was very well attended. Weather was beautiful, vendors were happy, citizens were happy. It's a great tradition. People, of course, thoroughly enjoy it. October's events, beyond that, we're carving in Crabapple, also well-attended, partnered with CCA. We also had a cleanup day at Providence Park, which you all got to see Saturday. It's beautiful. City staff and community volunteers helped at that. And upcoming, we have our ten-year anniversary on the first of December, the first of a year of events, which are still developing, but will be ongoing throughout the year. And our Christmas events, Christmas in Crabapple, again partnered with CCA, and then our Pancake Breakfast with Santa at the fire station on December tenth, upcoming, which leads into some of the, one of the strategic goal I wanted to talk about, which is building community connections, creating a culture of togetherness. The tenth anniversary is part of that, just one of those goals. And then improving and expanding the way we welcome people to Milton when they move here. Right now, Wayne Boston, our community builder, does a welcome packet. It has a letter, it has information about some of our programs, it has a relocation guide. But we want to, we've been working with economic development to expand that to include local businesses, other local programs that we have, opportunities for them to volunteer with nonprofits, information on individual departments, how they can, how they can interact and engage with the city. Another thing we'd like to do to build that culture of togetherness at New City Hall is have a Citizens Government Academy. You've probably seen that in other jurisdictions. I know the police department has a police academy, a citizens' police academy, and we'd like to host a government academy. So one night a week for a certain number of weeks, and this is still being developed, citizens will come in and learn about how their government works, interact, interact with people who work here and sort of put a face to the names that they see around the city and in the newspaper and at meetings, and they'll get to know those people and get to work with them directly. Another goal is to engage residents who aren't engaging digitally. I know a lot of us get information from Facebook or from social media or from online newspapers and other sources, but there's a, there's a whole, I think there's a gap, a certain segment of the population we're not reaching. They don't read their email, they don't, they're not on Facebook, and I want to find a way to reach them. One way, I just heard back from Meals on Wheels today, and we're going to send all of our Meals on Wheels recipients in Milton a paper version of our mayor's newsletter. So that's going to go out, and so they'll have a list of that at least. We have one way to engage them, but we're always looking for ideas to reach those people. And then continuing to connect residents with the different departments and their government as we continue to build our community and sense of place here in Milton, making it, of course, the best place to live.
Any questions? I tell you, the, you know, all those points are really good points and I believe really good direction. Just engage in our citizens and communications and, you know, community outreach, and that's, so it makes a good city great, so.
It is, thank you.
Derek, did you have something to say?
Just, I think it's listed on here, but we are doing the Christmas tree lighting.
I'm sorry, yes, that's, I skipped right over that. That is November twenty-sixth.
And that will be, still be, at least this year, we're going to be at Highway Nine.
Here, Highway Nine, we have, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks, Courtney.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Suzy, if you would, is there any public comment on item number three?
There is not, sir.
Okay, if you could just call the item.
Discussion of City of Milton Greenspace Advisory Board Composition, Ms. Kathy Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As all of you might already know, the Greenspace Bond passed with an eighty-two percent majority, so it passed by a very large margin, so that's very exciting for the community. And I wanted to update you on the next steps for the bond. The Finance Department will be working on getting a bond rating for the city, and they will also be working on the debt structure and issuing the bonds in the next few months. So they'll be working on that, and at the same time, we could also be working on our Land Advisory Committee. So that is the next step, is to form a Land Advisory Committee that will use the criteria and the ballot language to suggest land parcels for acquisition. So that's where we're at right now. So tonight, I'm not looking, we're not looking for a decision on that board right now. I just wanted to give you some background research and educate you on the best practices and responsibilities and functions that several other communities in the nation have used for their land advisory boards. So I have a handout here, this one for you, of my staff report on this. So I wanted to go over this. It seems long, kind of detailed, but I'm not going to talk about every single thing in there, but you all can look over that at your leisure, and sometime in the future, in the next month or so, we will come back to deciding on what you want that Land Advisory Board to look like and what, who it will be made up of. So, so first off, committee responsibilities, functions and best practices. So there's discussion here on the primary responsibilities of the committee, which is basically to facilitate the achievement of the objectives embodied in the ballot language and the criteria. There's also recommended committee functions. We would like the committee to establish policies and procedures for their committee on how they go about doing their duties. They would shape the bond criteria into usable measure or checklist for the land acquisition program. They would also study and select high-priority areas and resources. They would hopefully engage the public, participate in the land acquisition selection, have financial oversight over the bond amounts and what they will be used for. They will also, can also act as visible proponents for the program and act as liaisons between the technical staff and elected officials. So the best practices that, and this comes from the, a guidebook by the Trust for Public Land called the Conservation Program Handbook, and this guide has been described as "Universal and Definitive Resource Guide on Planning and Managing a Public Land Conservation Program." So they have researched many communities throughout the country and came up with a list of best practices used by many of those communities and what seems to work best. So they did a lot of the work for us, which is great. So some of those best practices are to act, this is for the committee, the Land Advisory Committee, to act in an advisory capacity to support the mission of the program. It sounds obvious, but it has to be constantly reminded what is the mission of the bond program. To participate in the project selection of which parcels will be acquired or easements acquired. To delegate transaction design and negotiation. And that, that's what they recommend, that the Land Advisory Committee is not like the agent, like the real estate agent or the agent for the transaction. They advise on which parcels, and they recommend to have a different person actually to negotiate the transaction with the landowner. And this helps avoid the possibility of conflict of interest. On that committee, selecting qualified candidates is obviously an important thing that we need to do, and that will be discussed further on on appointing committee members. And to depoliticize the nomination process. So this is something I'll be talking about in a little bit as well. There, in these best practices, there was discussion about many communities worrying that the elected officials might have too much say over who is on the committee and on the land acquisition process. So they recommend depoliticizing the process, and I will talk about that in just a minute. Also to avoid term limits so you can have continuity and institutional memory. Okay, so on appointing committee members, there's some basics. Procedural basics is to write job descriptions that include skills, jobs needs to be done, roles of the committee and stakeholders that should be required on the committee. Also to disconnect politics from the appointments. And with that, there's, there's alternative approaches to appointing committee members. So one of the approaches is to delegate the appointments. So that is, the reason for that is to make it more credible to the public, and you can, that can be done either partly or completely to separate it from the political environment. Complete removal is having a group other than the elected body choose the committee. That was done in Colorado Springs, and they gave it actually to the Parks Board the authority to do that. And there's discussion there on that. The other way is partial removal from the political process, and that would be for another, either a nominating committee or staff to select a list or a slate of candidates and then give that slate to the council, the elected body, for them to decide and pick the candidates from that, from that slate. So it's part, from the elected officials, part from a nominating committee or from staff. An example of that is in Miami-Dade County, did it in that way. So the other, see, the other approach is to separate location from qualification. And that basically, what that is about is when, instead of saying each council member will pick one person from their district, and what these, what they recommend is to separate where the people live from who is chosen so they can best represent the community as a whole instead of individual, specific districts. And this was done, example of that was done in Santa Fe, New Mexico, where they called for, is open call for applications and let anybody in the city apply, and then screen the applications from there. And then in this place in Santa Fe, they had the staff accept the applications and categorize them into three regions based on geography, not based on district, but based on the regions. Now, Santa Fe County, Santa Fe, New Mexico is bigger than Milton, so, I mean, we have to adjust this to the size of our community, of course. And then the staff there recommended the slate of candidates, but included a stakeholder interest, and then, then the county commission votes on, the entire county commission votes on the members, and it's not each person, again, each elected official gets a choice, they vote on the candidates as a whole. And there's just a few other key considerations in appointing committee members, just to make sure we do outreach to potential candidates, and we put out guidelines for memberships and publicize that so we get a big response from our community. Also, in the process of making the selection, what, what we want to screen the applicants for, for example, then make sure they're a city resident or they have certain qualifications. And then if, if we decide, if it's decided there's a partial removal from the political landscape, then the officials will make the, elected officials will make their final appointments from a pool of candidates. And this also suggests that all the officials should vote on the candidates as a majority vote would be sufficient to appoint that candidate. Also to make sure the committee members have desirable traits and skills that, that we would, the city would decide what skills and traits we would like, and their suggestions here, people that can build credibility with landowners, businesses and philanthropies, scientists, environmentalists, and technical committees. Now, this is an interesting thing that they recommend. So there is a recommendation that you can have two committees, an advisory committee that would kind of identify parcels of land, and then a technical committee that can help in the areas of real estate, natural resources, land management, appraisers, surveyors, things like that, people with technical experience that can help with the actual transactions. And generally, that type of committee would not meet regularly, but would be available for consultation either by staff, elected officials or the Land Advisory Committee itself. There's also just a list here of common problems and what to avoid when forming committee, and, you know, that would be something that when we decide on the committee, we would make sure we would try and avoid some of these common problems that other communities have gotten into and that we can learn from other people's mistakes, other communities' mistakes. Let's see, one here on page eight. Here, there are some, I listed some case studies and examples, some that I referenced earlier, but there's a little bit more detail on there, in Santa Fe County, New Mexico, in San Juan County, Washington, Jacksonville, Florida, Colorado Springs and Miami-Dade. And they're, they're all a mixture of all of these best practices and things we've talked about, and some are very different. In Santa Fe, New Mexico, they had an open call for application, the staff recommended a slate of candidates, they offered three candidates per region, and then the whole commission voted on the committee. And then, the whole commission voted on the committee regardless of where they lived in the county. Let's see, San Juan County, their land acquisition was funded by real estate transfer tax. Let's see, what was different about this one? This one was very different in that the commissioners, the land advisory committee, they recommended all the projects, but they wrote into their law that the committee, the county commissioners must approve all projects, but that the law makes it impossible to reject a specific transaction. Pretty much no line item veto, like they would have several projects per year, they would give it to the county commission per year, and say, "These are all the projects we do," and they were not allowed to do a line item veto. So, that's kind of an interesting, different way of doing it. I do have that, there is a handout for their ordinance on that attached to this, if you wanted to look at it. Also, Santa Fe County, there's a handout after the back of this memo also, on the makeup of their committee. Jacksonville, Florida, had the example of the two separate volunteer committees, an advisory committee and a technical committee. And this talks about their, what made up, what was made up of their advisor committee and their technical committee, and they worked together to come up with land acquisition sites. Colorado Springs, they have kind of an adaptable model for communities to use. They have certain stakeholder groups, they're guaranteed representation. They're the ones that their Parks Board were given the authority to name the members of the committee. And the city council could not approve a transaction without the support of the land committee and the Parks Board. Miami-Dade County, Florida, there was oversight committee of 13 members. They nominated, their nominating committee recommended three people from each district. There is a much larger area, so they wanted to recommend people from all of the districts. Okay, so, take, given all that, and that is for you all to look over in your time, on your own time. And I do have some staff recommendations after reviewing all this and looking at this, and this is just my recommendations after reading all of these case studies. First off, I think that the council needs to decide if it wants a partial, complete, or no removal at all from the political process on appointing committee members. Staff recommends a partial removal, where a slate of, slate or list of candidates is recommended by a non-elected entity, such as a nominating committee or staff. And then, the elected officials then choose the appointees of the, to the committee from that list. Those recommendations could come from staff, from staff such as a combination of city staff, conservation managers, the city manager, the Parks Department, community development, public works, whoever else might be, have some valid input in the selection of those or the slate of candidates. Also, then, the council needs to decide if it wants to base its selection of candidates on a one district, one candidate per district, or on the community as a whole. So, that's a basic decision for you all to make. Based on these best practices and other functions and responsibilities with the community, I would recommend that they, they would separate, that you would separate the location from where the qualifications, from their qualifications, to ensure that the committee members represent the whole community. Because otherwise, you could, you know, you could foresee maybe someone from one area saying, "Well, we want a trail or a park in our area," and then them not looking at the community as a whole and wanting, everybody wanting it just in their area. And that's, you know, something that could come up and cause some division within the committee. And also, this approach allows for flexibility if it's determined the community needs committee members with specific expertise, like if you wanted a person with parks experience or conservation or land management on the committee. Then, the city council is, could also determine what qualifications would be needed for the advisory committee. And this could be, you know, we want to make sure we include representatives from certain stakeholder groups who have other desired traits and skills, such as people who build, can build credibility with landowners, businesses, philanthropies, and agencies. And also, certain personalities that are suiting, suited to promote conservation to a broad audience of people. Council and our staff will need to decide what roles need to be filled on the committee and what jobs need to be done for that committee, what jobs need to be slated for that committee. Also, it would need to, if we were to do a call for applications, we would have to publicize and put out a call for those applications to the community through whatever public outreach we have, so the community members would know that we were looking for people to apply to be on this committee. And then, we would, we would screen applications for required and desired qualifications. And then, from there, from those applications, we could create a slate of candidates that would be presented to the council for selection. And again, those, that slate could be either chosen by a separate nominating committee or by staff. And then, council would vote on the selection of each candidate, and the majority vote for the candidate should be sufficient, a majority vote. And then, the council would have to decide if they want just an advisory committee, just one committee, to do several roles, or if they want an advisory committee and a technical committee, as I discussed before, and you want two different committees, or if you want it all as a whole, all done by one committee. And then, and then, for the actual sale or easement transaction, I think we were going to need to hire, you know, real estate agents, attorneys, or city attorney, depending on what you decide on that, appraisers, et cetera, for the land acquisition transaction, especially in the beginning, and staff may be able to perform some of that preliminary work for future transactions going forward after they have experience with the first few. And then, I also recommend to follow the best practices outlined in this memo for the creation and operation of the committee, and to, for the committee to establish rules, policies, and procedures for the committee, and to, of course, work to avoid the common problems and mistakes that were listed. And do you have any questions?
Do you have a question? Bert?
So, how many people do you envision on this slate? If we were to do a partially removed, as you recommended, how many people do you think?
So, I guess it depends on how many stakeholder groups we want to have, how many citizens at large we might want to have, if we want to have someone from the horse committee, the land, a community, the landowner community, the conservation community. So, it depends on what communities and groups of people you want represented to come up with a number. Of course, I would think it would be an odd number, and not too large as that people could not come to, you know, agreement when you have too many, too many hands.
Yeah, I know what you're saying on that. The one thing that, I don't know if this necessarily concerns me, but just want to bring up, I do think, I had an email last week from somebody, you know, saying, it kind of goes exactly what you're saying and exactly what you're, I'm not sure not saying, but, you know, we live on the eastern side of the city, and we want to make sure that we're included in this. So, I think there's some balance of trying to have, you know, some people, maybe there's, maybe there's at least one person from each specific district. And then, I agree with you completely about having people that have interest or expertise need to be in there as well, but I do think there needs to be at least one person from each district included in the slate.
And another way of dealing with that is to, and through this discussion, is to make sure that the committee strictly adheres to the policies and procedures of the committee. So, if we, if you wanted to write into one of those policies that these land acquisition projects must encompass the whole city, must touch, you know, all the different districts, and that would be a consideration that the committee would have to look to on each, on each decision or the decisions as a whole when they decide what, which parcels to recommend. And you could have that, if you had that as a policy, that's something they would have to, you know, abide by, even if it's not a person from each district. I mean, that's just another way of dealing with that.
And I'd just say, you know, Kathy, obviously, you've done a lot of homework on this, and we appreciate that. Also, to me, it's very important, and I believe everybody else, that it's a total transparent process. And it is a complex process, because while some folks may say, you know, limit the ability for the elected officials to have input on here, but, you know, also, it could be citizens that would have a conflict interest, or, you know, if you go outside, then people could say, "Well, they don't have a, you know, they don't have an interest in our city because they're outside." So, I think it's got to be a blend of, you know, all different areas, and, but I think the most important thing is just to have it all transparent, so that, you know, the whole process and everything is in the open, and the public has all the input that they can on it. And to Bert's point, you know, we certainly want to make sure that the whole city is represented.
And that's part of, on the best practices, that's part of what the committee would do, would be oversight and dealing and outreach to the public to make sure that the public, and of course, as we talked, I'm sorry, as we talked about during this process before the bond was approved, was that we would have citizen input before the final decision was made by the council. So, that is, that factor should always be there. That's what we promised the public, and so, that is something that needs to be drawn into how this whole thing works, the whole committee works as well. And the communications director and I both spoke about in every aspect of this process that we would give information out to the public. We have, we'll have a webpage dedicated to the bond and everything that's going on in the bond. At the same time, you do have to protect the landowners, that's in here too, personal information, you know, and financial information stuff while the process is going on, but still allowing public to, the public to have information on it.
Matt and Bill?
Great work, Kathy. Did you, of these case studies that you included, did you have one that you thought was your favorite?
I liked a combination. That's my recommendations at the end. I took a little bit from each. I like the idea of the two committees, the technical and then the advisory committee, if we could get enough people to do both committees. But the technical committee is kind of, you know, doesn't meet regularly, you could just call them for advice, you know, on certain things, so it wouldn't have to be so time-consuming for them. If we could have some experts that want to help, but they don't want to be on a regular committee, that's an option.
Sure.
And, you know, I like the ones to come up with a slate of candidates for the city council to decide from, just so the public, so it, again, depoliticizes it, so that the public is transparent, the public doesn't get anxious about political appointments. But the elected officials, of course, would have the final say on who would be on the committee.
Now, there are, and one more question, there are other organizations out there like PATH, that deals with trails and things like that as well. Obviously, you know, they would have advice or technical expertise as well. How would you see a group like that working with these committees?
So, I spoke to the people at Trust for Public Land, who we use as a consultant prior to the bond, and they said they are very willing to give advice as well. They wouldn't want to be on the committee. Again, they would kind of be that technical consultant type of thing. And trails people, land conservation, land trust, all those type of people could be the technical advisors as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Will?
First, I want to congratulate you on your effort here. You and your group that pulled this all together. And I noticed the city was covered up with those green signs. And I appreciated the mailers that you sent out, too. I think that those were impressive.
And we just wanted to get as much information out to the public with that, so, continue that transparency.
Early on, you talked about writing a job description for committee members. I'd encourage that to the extent that you can, probably draw upon these other jurisdictions that have put similar groups together. I think you can do great things with it. Look forward to it.
Okay. And Bert's right.
Quick question, maybe this is diving too deep into the weeds, but the property selection or the, when the committee, let's say the committees form, is there a thing of confidentiality when people start putting, talking about specific parcels, or how does that work? How has that worked in the past with other organizations?
So, yeah, so, the committee would go and decide what areas maybe to look at and what parcels they think would be a high priority parcel, or a parcel that would meet our criteria and the ballot language. And then, as we said, we would, they recommend to have one person that is going to be the person that does the transaction, that deals with the landowner. And if the landowner, there's two scenarios. The landowner would come to us and say, "Hey, I have a piece of parcel I'd maybe like to sell to the city." And if that doesn't happen enough, then we could go out to and talk to landowners, "Hey, you know, I know you have this piece of parcel," even if it's for sale, "Would you consider selling it to the city or putting an easement on it, you know, or whatever it is that works best?" And then, then deal with that person now that their information would be kept confidential until the point that it looks like that that would be a great parcel, and the landowner would agree, "Yeah, I would consider selling it to the city." And then, their personal information would be kept financial, and I mean confidential. And then, when it would come to the point of the council, when it came here and the public would see it, there, the city attorney and I have talked about having a contract that would say, have a provision in there that the contract would be subject to approval by the council, so that, so that they couldn't then see, "Oh, everybody's really interested," and then raise the price. We would come to an agreed upon price and say, "Okay, that's the price, and we think we're going to go forward with this, but it's subject to approval." And if it was approved, great, we're at that price. If not, then we can get out of the contract.
So, to that, to that end, then, you would see like nondisclosure agreements or something, the people that are participating on this? Because I know, until you actually swear someone to it, it's real easy for people to say, "Okay, we won't talk." But then, "Well, let me tell you what I know." I'm just thinking from a process standpoint, that would be something that would be...
And that could be part of the policies and procedures and bylaws and rules of the committee.
Okay.
I mean, that's an important thing to put in there, or else, you know, landowners will, you know, they hear that happens once, and then you wouldn't have anybody, you know, you'd have problems getting people to want to sell the land to the city.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Again, thank you so much, and appreciate not only your efforts, but all our citizens and everything to make this happen.
Sure, and we'll, we're coming back to you in a few weeks or so.
Two weeks.
Yeah, to discuss more specifics on the committee. In the meantime, you got lots of reading.
Yeah, it's a very important thing that we've been excited about for quite a while, so, thank you so much. Okay, Sudi, if you will, please call the next item.
Next item is discussion regarding public health emergency management. Mr. Matt Marietta.
Good evening. I wanted to bring you guys, discuss with you an opportunity that we have to be a little bit more responsive in our service that we provide to the community. We have something in the emergency management field called points of distribution, which is where the government is able to distribute things like water or food supplies or medication if needed in the case of a large-scale emergency. Up until this point, it has been handled by Fulton County with a partnership with us, but they have one site that they've selected, and all of North Fulton goes to the same place. They are currently trying to, that obviously could be unwieldy in the, in the event of a natural disaster. So, they're trying to find a way to spread that responsibility out to the local communities that are actively involved and engaged in emergency management. So, the thing that Fulton County's approached us with is the opportunity of setting up our own point of distribution within the city of Milton. And this would be something that would be set up only in the event of some kind of a mass public health crisis, or something where we need to distribute supplies to the Milton community. And we would take the primary responsibility of organizing that, setting up the site, providing security for it, staffing it in-house, rather than, and with, obviously, with a health, with the support of Fulton County Department of Health, Fulton County Emergency Management, the feds, any other, any other partners we've had, but the primary control of the coordination of it will, will come to Milton. One of the neat things about this is this offers us the opportunity to partner with businesses, potentially HOAs, and other community groups to come up with a more diverse approach to helping our public rather than just rely on a single point that everybody gathers in the event of a catastrophe. We are just at the very... catastrophe. Um, we are just at the very beginning stages of, of looking through this, of, of trying to understand, um, how we would deploy it specific to our staffing ability, uh, specific to our community needs and, and the different resources available to us, um, on, on the private side and in the community itself. Um, so, um, but once the process gets fully fleshed out and we'll have a, a policy and, and everything, uh, as part of it, we'll also be doing tabletop and, and, uh, full-scale exercises to, to prove that we're capable of implementing this plan. Um, that will be at some point in the future. Um, but I just, I wanted to, to bring that to your attention because it kind of represents a change in, in how we're gonna, we're gonna provide service in this one area. And, uh, Field, any questions that y'all have?
Rick?
Do we have a stated process right now, Matt, um, like disaster recovery if we had, had an emergency?
There, there is a national, uh, disaster recovery framework, um, that's part of the National Response Plan that, uh, I've been trained in and other people in the fire department have been trained in. Um, we're, we're required to undergo routine National Incident Management System training. Um, we also have a local emergency operation plan, which I'm in the process of, of reviewing. I think the last time that was updated was 2010. Um, so we're, we're pretty much due for that as well. Um, and, uh, the recovery portion of that needs to be expanded, frankly, in the wake of the, um, the, the feds addition to the National Recovery Framework. Um, to this point, um, when we've had Stafford Act declared disasters, uh, they, they basically write the rules for how the recovery is going to occur when the disaster is declared. And, um, to this point, I've, I've just attended the meetings and, and picked it up and, and, uh, then come back and coordinated with Public Works and Finance and, and the other relevant city departments to, to follow through on that process. So the, the, the long and short is not, not specifically, but, um, it, it is provided for, uh, in, in a fashion.
So this would get us a little bit closer than put a little bit more meat on the bone?
Yes, this, this would help, definitely.
This, uh, this opportunity came to us about a year ago. Um, and, uh, Matt, Matt won't tell you this, but the reason it came to us is, is primarily because of the, uh, abilities and the work that, that Matt has been involved with over the years. Um, becoming a, a point of distribution is a great opportunity for the city of Milton. It's not something that's necessarily bestowed on, on, uh, on just anybody. Uh, they obviously believe that, that, that we have the, uh, the ability and the infrastructure to be able to handle this. Um, it gives us an opportunity to be kind of the, uh, determine our own future in the event that we have one of these mass events. And, uh, it does put us on the right track. Um, more towards what you're talking about, uh, Council of, Council of Overmorris is, uh, we're in the process of looking at our current, we do have current systems in place where, uh, we work directly through the county and then through the state to be able to, uh, recover from disaster, but what we're looking is to be able to, uh, improve our own capacities locally in the event that we have, whether it's a mass casualty event or even just a, a, just a weather event that, that brings down, you know, all sorts of trees and wires. Um, so we're looking at starting to drill on that locally, um, to make sure that we're equipped to be able to deal with those events in the event that they happen.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Matt?
Um, so in your estimation, you think we would need additional staff in order to do this?
Um, I, it, we, we shouldn't. Um, it, it's, and, and there's different ways to configure it. Again, um, it, all depends on how much of a relationship we build with the community. Uh, we have volunteer opportunities. We, we've talked about building a search program and, and there could be an opportunity to expand that to support it. Um, but, uh, just, just the over and under, if we were just to do our own pod, just one pod for all of the city of Milton, um, the, the general estimation is about sixty employees to, to make it function, which, um, with the staff that we have, we would be able to, um, to absorb that. Um, and hopefully we'll be a little bit more creative than, than just throw a government program out there. We'll, we'll be able to, to involve the community a, a little bit more in the process, so, um, it, it could not be even that, that staff intensive.
What kind of metrics would we be able to say that we're doing? Obviously, we understand that, I mean, obviously saving anyone's life is, is a plus on that end because we want to make sure we have everybody safe. Um, but in the, in the event of a mass casualty scenario, tornadoes, ice storms or whatever, um, what kind of metrics do we do to say the return on investment for the committee, for the citizens, et cetera?
Um, I, I think, I think it's ultimately a question of efficiency. Um, because-
Is there response time or is that-
Yeah, response time, e- ease of, ease of, um, access.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because you, you would be going to a site in Milton rather than, than, uh, driving down south somewhere. Um, if, if we do have a major incident, the last thing we're going to want is to tell all forty thousand Milton residents to get on the road and go driving down toward Atlanta.
Right.
So that in and of itself is, is, is almost priceless. Um, a- and then clearly, uh, when you start doing things like this, there's drills like, like, uh, the chief mentioned, like that city manager mentioned, there's, there's drills and tabletop exercises and other ways that we have to be tested-
Sure.
-in order to, to maintain the federal government's trust in our ability to be able to, to do our jobs right as well.
Is this going to be regional or is this going to be city-specific? Will you work with Cherokee, Forsyth as well in this?
It's, um, primarily it's happening by public health district, which is, um, Fulton County, um, and Fulton County Emergency Management Agency. Um, it's, it's regional in the sense that, um, Forsyth and Cherokee are, are planning along the same lines-
Okay.
-as we are. Um, so everybody is going to be, um, basically focused on their own kingdom-
Gotcha.
-if, if something happened.
Okay.
Okay, Bill?
Title of your agenda item leads me more to, uh, think about diseases and outbreaks of, uh, kind of ailments like that that would be covered or, or, uh, aided by CDC. And what kind of, is that part of the, uh, the program? And is there a sync with CDC on your program here? And what kind of support, um, would we get? I'm sure they, they jumped in if there's some mass outbreak of, uh, who knows what, rabies or anything else?
Anthrax.
Yeah, right.
Um, yes, uh, honestly, the, the primary motivator for, for this is, is, uh, public health. It's, and that, that's why we have that title and, and the CDC specifically. Um, the, it, the, the concept is called points of distribution or they call them a pod. Um, that concept and the resources that we put in place can be tasked to other things, like if we had a water or food distribution that we had to do because of some kind of dis- disruption in the water supply. The same mindset, um, can be applied. It can be shifted a little bit, but still applied. Um, and, and they already have the systems in place to provide that service. It's just at the county level instead of, instead of at the local level, which, we're in a county of a million residents, it becomes a little bit unwieldy to, to do that. Um, the, um, a- and then there's also other opportunities that we're pursuing. Uh, the, the federal government actually has a, a training class in Aniston, Alabama, uh, a series of training classes that, um, our EMS coordinator is, is signed up for to, to start down that, that process to understand better the, the CDC side of, of, um, this plan as well. Um, so we're, we're, we're in the process of building our expertise in, um, being able to interface a little bit better with what their expectations are when, when that comes.
And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, depending on the type of event, um, the CDC would be at the top of the food chain on this, correct?
Yes, um, the, the CDC has something called the Strategic National Stockpile, which is, uh, prepackaged medications, uh, in the event of disasters and they're spread throughout the country in, in different locations, that, um, they will release on the event of a, a, some kind of a event, um, a public health event. And, um, the, the main drive of this is to, um, prove that we're able to, to, uh, handle that on our own, um, which goes back to the concept of the pod and, and then opens up all sorts of other possibilities for, for the city to be able to provide better service and, and more local service as opposed to, um, again, sending residents south to Atlanta in the middle of a disaster, so.
Okay. This is one of, no, it sounds good, but I also commend you on your, your hard work. It's definitely an honor for, not only you and our staff, but, you know, for our citizens-
Thank you.
...also, so.
And, um-
Thank you very much.
It, it, I have a, uh, I just looked before I came up here, the, um, FEMA has a, um, online training class. It takes about four hours. Uh, if you, if y'all are interested in the link to just see, get an overview of what it is I'm talking about. There's a, a video attached to it and everything. I can, I can forward that to the city manager. He can share it with you all if you're interested.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item and if we have any public comment around.
There is no public comment. Discussion of RC sixteen zero four to create retaining wall standards in chapter sixty-four, article seventeen, division three, site improvement standards. Ms. Kathy Field.
Oh, I, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is a, um, a, a, an amendment to, uh, our ordinance in regard to, um, regulating retaining walls. Uh, currently, we really, um, we, we feel that we need additional regulations for these retaining walls that may impact surrounding buildings, land and uses. We want to require the construction of retaining walls in a manner consistent with engineering and construction best practices. And to lessen the impact of large retaining walls on abutting properties and the public by encouraging the use of landscaping and aesthetically pleasing design elements. Um, I do have a few slides that I'd like to show you in, in terms of the reason why we felt that we had a need. Um, as I've mentioned, the availability of land that's easily developed is becoming more difficult to find. Much of the undeveloped land has topography issues that may require large retaining walls and therefore we're proposing regulations to limit the height and number of retaining walls to be constructed. And here are some examples of retaining walls that we really did not want to see in the city of Milton. So, um, there's one there.
We're from our-
And there is another one there. Um, so, um, accordingly, we have drafted, um, some changes that are attached here. And essentially, what it says is that the attached regulations will apply to all retaining walls except those walls measuring a height of less than four feet and also accept a terrace combination of walls in which each separate wall retains less than four feet of unbalanced fill and each successive wall is separated by a distance of at least one times the height of the highest wall. So, um, anything more than essentially four feet or a terraced four-foot wall, um, will be regulated. And, um, so we have attached, um, proposed changes to the ordinance to do exactly that. And I'm certainly available, as well as Carter, to answer any questions you may have in regard to this.
Okay, Rick?
When you say regulated, Kathy, does this, I clearly understand when you, you're looking at something big along the roadway, where you're going to put up a big wall that's, but what about when we get into individual residences, you know, if my home's being built out and my, my side, I've got a five-foot high where they need to put a retaining wall so I can have entry into my terrace level? Is that something that you could make an exception above the four feet? Or is four feet with the setbacks, is that firm? How, how does that work as far as approval?
Um, I, I'll defer that question to Carter.
Anything over four feet would require a permit.
Okay, so it'd be permitted, so you'd go through the review process?
That's right. So over four feet would require a permit and over six feet would require engineer drawings.
Okay.
Um, as well as if you got over six feet, you know, it's, would require probably, would require BZA approval.
So it's not saying you can't have a, it's basically saying, once we get above four feet, we want to be able to take a look at it and make sure that it's within standards or something-
That's right.
-we'd like to see.
That's right.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a permitting height, trigger height at the present?
We, we do.
Four feet is okay?
Yep. Those, those standards are the same as current, the four feet and the six feet. It's just, uh, when you get into the two six-foot tall walls, that kicks you to BZA is where our, uh, main difference relies.
Okay, Bill, just a question on materials down in, uh, perm, uh, under permitting D design guidelines. I'm not sure if I've gotten right down to the materials section of it, but, uh, just a question. Um, is the use of, uh, railroad timbers allowed?
Under, in a non-permitted wall, it would be. So one, a wall under four feet tall, you, you could really use whatever material you want to use.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Okay.
Sudi, do we have any public comment for our next item?
There is no public comment for item six.
Okay, if you please call that on it.
Discussion of RC sixteen zero six to require fence permits for fences erected for agricultural purposes in section sixty-four dash two-one-two, fence and wall specifications, exemptions. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm currently, fence permits for fences erected for agricultural purposes such as enclosing animals or crops is not required. Over the past few months, there have been fences erected in the city that do not meet the requirements for agricultural fencing. So what we felt, um, should happen is that, um, by requiring a fence permit to review the construction of all fences, we can maintain compliance. However, we are proposing that the permit fee will not be required for this type of permit. So we will get to review all fences that come through it, just to make sure that indeed they're being built according to specs, um, but we will not charge, um, a permit when it's in an agricultural zone.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Comments?
I, I'm gonna make a comment and I totally understand and respect the reason that this is before us. Uh, it makes sense, um, because, you know, we do have, have ordinances and rules and without, uh, at least looking at them, people could, could, uh, create something that doesn't meet, meet code.
Right.
Um, but I would like to say, if we do adopt this, we need to be very careful and offer a lot of communication because as people, you know, we talked about earlier, you know, when I was talking about equestrian and, and we're trying to pro- protect and preserve the rural feel. And it's interesting when you look and we, we have these ordinances, these rules for fences and types, so that as we have the development, there's a lot more people here than when it was, when it was, you know, originally rural. And obviously that makes sense to, if not, people put all kind of different things up and it'd be a hodgepodge, it wouldn't look good. But we also have to remember too, that, you know, the people that this effect are really the rural, the true people we're trying to keep here. And, you know, back in the day, what rural meant was the city didn't come in and tell the farmer how to put a, what type of fence to put in, and his neighbors didn't complain about it, but his neighbors came and helped him put it up, so.
Right.
Anyway, so again, my point to that is, um, we need to be very careful that our agricultural and rural citizens and livestock and agricultural use fences, you know, again, don't feel, I think there's already a feeling that, you know, the government's getting into too much of, of their business and making it tough on them. So I, I certainly don't want to, you know, as we talked earlier about the equestrian group, um, we want to promote it, but sometimes it's not all about promoting their business. It's, it's more about just promoting or, or supporting their lifestyle and, and whatnot and not adding more rules and, and regulations on it. So I, I certainly respect the, the, um, spirit that this is done so that somebody doesn't put something up, but-
Yeah, and that's, that is the spirit, exactly.
-need to realize that there's, there's also some frustration from, you know, agricultural and equestrian people when you got folks telling them, you know, this is how you need to put your horse fence and all, and you pull in your gated neighborhood and shut the gate and, you know, hop out of your Lexus or whatever. So, Matt?
Yeah, I, I would agree on a lot of that. I think that we might be premature with this prior to an equestrian committee actually being created, um, because I would like to hear their thoughts, um, on issues exactly like this. I understand how something like this can come up, but I think that we, um, should be careful of what we do. Obviously, as, as that type of land is important to us, we want to make sure that, that people that represent the equestrian aspect of our community are, have their voice heard. So I would, I'm okay with waiting right now until we hear what they would have to say.
And I'd also like to explore, because as we get onto the interior of AG one property, I, you know, totally understand, I think it's important along the roadways and people's to see, but, you know, I'd also like to explore and maybe the committee can help that. You know, do we really want to regulate what livestock fences and things are within someone's property? Um, because that makes a big difference. Because that makes a big difference. Not everybody, you know, you got 10,000 feet of fence to put up, you know, can put up a nice full board fence up, so.
Yeah, and I get, to that same point, I guess, what I'm hearing you say is not that you want to start putting a whole design standard on agricultural fences. This is to avoid, if we have an issue or misunderstanding, because I think we had a couple of situations where people came in and said, hey, do I need to get a fence permit? And the answer was, the question was, well, is it for agricultural use? Yes, it's for agricultural use, and then no further questions or vetting. And we did have a couple of fences that got put up that went against standards, potentially what people had been denied in the past. I think that's, because I know I was pushing for this to try to, not necessarily this format, but a way to actually avoid the confusion so that you could give guidance not to slow it down and say, oh, you can't have agricultural fences, but just clarify, if it's along the roadway, then fine, sign. Here's what we want, if it's back in your property, we're not really changing what's allowed or not allowed. Is that correct, or we?
Right.
We're not trying to add another layer of complexity of agricultural offenses.
No, it really is, it's really to be as helpful as we can so that we don't deal with after the facts. And that was the intent for, for this.
Absolutely, and that's why I said that upfront, that was the spirit of it, Rick, to make sure. But again, I think we need to be careful. Number one, if we were to enact this, we need to communicate that so that the
It's clear.
The agricultural community doesn't feel like we're just coming up with another permit for them or another stat.
Right.
But again, I, I like the idea of having our committee look into it and talk to more of the horse farm owners and whatnot. Because again, they, you know, that may be a big sticking point that, you know, when we're back in the back of our property, we don't necessarily want to have a so-and-so type fence and whatnot, so.
Bill? Yeah, I think the issue that we're probably dealing with here or talking about is overreaching to some extent. And how far inside property limits do we need to be regulating? Does that mean we're going to start regulating what's inside houses? But I like Matt's suggestion here too. I think let's let the folks that deal with these issues and live with this situation really contribute to this discussion. Let's find out what works for them.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you very much. All right, City, we call our public comment and then call the next item.
And respectfully, I just received a public comment on item number six.
Okay. If the council's okay, I'm fine with listening to that. Council okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, that would be Ms. Tamara DeJurgis.
Hi, thanks, Joe, thanks, Matt and Bill for speaking about that. I wanted to speak about this.
Ms. DeJurgis, could you please, just for the record, name and address?
Tamara DeJurgis, 1425 Birmingham Road.
Thank you. Bill?
Okay, so I just wanted to say, just as a homeowner, a resident and someone who has agriculture, this feels overreaching. And this, this is something that I find very frustrating as a horse owner. Because there are a lot of reasons why you erect fences, why you move fences, why I need to move fences to protect myself and, I mean, my, my livelihood from everybody that's moving into Milton. I, as, you know, you can ask any horse owner, how many times has your fence been hit overnight by a drunk driver and no one stopped? That's, that's frustrating. I'm the one that can get sued over that, okay? So, I need to move my fences around sometimes. I'm also looking at, you know, your 10,000 linear feet of fence. Yeah, I'm looking at putting in a double, a double fencing just to protect against that and to have to ask the city, how, you know, and I don't think a lot of you own horses. I'm guessing, I know a couple of you do. But that's, that's frustrating that somebody that doesn't understand agriculture is now going to tell me what I need to do. It's very frustrating to add that bureaucracy. And I'm very disappointed in the city of Milton with that as well. I mean, I appreciate your comments on this, but it's very frustrating that the whole reason why I moved to Milton was because of horses and the rural community. And that now, suddenly, we're going to have government looking over us and telling me how to manage my horses and my fencing. So, I, I hope that you turn this over to the equestrian committee and also reconsider this. To the, the people that bought here probably know a little bit more about the fencing and may need this for other business and reasons to protect themselves. And to have to wait to correct a situation that usually is not our fault. Like if my fences are getting hit a lot, which happens, I don't want to have to be asking the city and waiting for a response.
Thank you very much. Okay. City, if you'd please call our last item.
Our final item this evening is discussion of a resolution to approve mobility. LLC's application for utilization of the public rights of way of the city of Milton for telecommunication facilities as authorized by law. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no approval of anything this evening, but we do need to talk about this resolution. It will be up on your next meeting. You probably remember back in 2014 when we had a similar application by Crown Castle. I don't know if you remember that, that name rings a bell. But basically, there's a state statute, 4651, that basically says that if you are a chartered telephone company, which, by the way, if you're wondering how to pronounce it, I pronounced it wrong for a while. It's mobility, not mobility tie or whatever, it's mobility. Although I have grappled with the correct pronunciation for about six weeks now. But it's mobility, and they are in fact a chartered telephone company. And in the backup, hopefully, you will look at their charter in the back. You'll see the Public Service Commission has, has in fact deemed them a chartered telephone company. What the statute says is, is if they are in fact a chartered telephone company, they have the right to build their communication facilities within state, county and city right-of-way. That's the same exact thing that Crown Castle was able to do as well. There are some protections that occur to the city of Milton. One of them, of course, is that the provider has to pay what's called due compensation. Hope that name, that phrase rings a bell as well. It's basically 3% of, of their revenue from the individuals that receive service from these facilities in Milton. So, that would be in here as well. What the statute anticipates is, is that once a telephone company provides a complete application to the jurisdiction, which mobility now has, they finally got their application complete around October 12th. We have 60 days to either, number one, approve their application or number two, do nothing, in which case their application's deemed approved. Sort of an interesting statutory configuration there. So, in any event, my recommendation is that we ultimately do approve it. It is a two-step process. Toward the end of the statute, it also provides that nothing contained within the statute giving them the right to erect their facilities in our right-of-way means we do not get an opportunity to reasonably regulate what they're doing. And of course, we have a telecommunications ordinance in Milton that we believe will also come into play with respect to not only the where, but the how. This one is a little different though, and I want to be very careful. Can we have, is there a, David, is there a slide we can put up? I want you to first of all, see the where. And I believe that is on, what is the road there? Is that Morris? Did I get that correct? It's Morris Road, and there is a distinction from the Crown Castle application. And I can't show it to you because I did not provide it to David, but I have it with me and you can look at it. This tower is large. It is a monopole, but it's like 78 feet. So, it's not fiber optic underneath our ground, or it's not a modest tower that might look perhaps like a traditional utility tower. This is fairly large. So, we're getting into this sort of a no man's land where I think that a lot of the telecommunications companies now don't require the 300-foot triple-guy wired tower that obviously would have to be placed on private property. So, we're getting away from that, but we're not quite to the true micro cells that are truly unobtrusive. This is sort of a hybrid, oh, well, thank you, David. Okay, there, there you go, there it is. And, I mean, it looks like that can blast off and hit orbit. So, it is, it is striking. And again, this is one part of the, of the step. This is the step we have to take. If we don't take it by December 12th, we will be, we will be deemed to have taken it anyway, that is, the approval. But then, they're pushing back a little bit, mobility is, with respect to the telecommunications component of this. I think because they understand that that's where this could get perhaps a little, a little dicey with what we're going to be able to authorize to go there. But I do have to tell you, the state of the law is a little heavier on their side of the scale with respect to this. The stat, you know, the statute anticipates they get to do this. But how they get to do it is subject to our reasonable regulation. And so, that'll be coming to you as well.
Bill? Are there any devices going on the top of this tower, or is it a slick pole?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure. All I know is what I, what I see right there.
I think the very top of it shows the device.
It's like small antenna on top.
Mm-hmm.
It's not that small.
Oh, relative. Small compared to the 78-foot pole.
Correct, right, it's a small cap on top, correct?
Two feet, 10 inches tall on top.
The other question is, are we going to really get this information out to the public?
That's a good question. I think Councilmember Lusk, that would be very appropriate that as we enter into the telecommunications side of this, that I think some due notice to surrounding or affected property owners would be, would be well, well-placed.
I think we, we need to add to that education, you know, of the law and the technology and all that. Because, you know, obviously, folks probably don't want to see this.
And I wonder, Mr. Mayor, if there's an appreciation of how, of what this does in your jurisdiction. I mean, you know, we, we see the battles that occur on these facilities on private land and yet, here we are on our, our right-of-way.
Well, prime example, Ms. Pace is here tonight and she can relate directly to a pole that went up in her neighborhood. And I think we need to be as transparent as we possibly can be as far as letting the public know that these are out there and the backup information that goes along with it, the rights of the utility or the rights of the city and where we stand. Cite, cite the law that's, applies to facilities like this. People, usually the average resident, doesn't really understand the positions that these utilities have. And it's, I'd like to get that discussion out front before we get too far down the road.
Agreed. I, I think too, in the difference between a pole that looks like, a lot like a light pole, which is one sort of animal, and then this, which is different. And so, we're trying to think of the long game as well, if this is coming in, how many more of these are going to come in?
Is this a similar structure, Carter, to the one that's on Bethany Bend, close to Hopeful Rose? I don't think it's quite that tall, but there's a.
Is that one of the Crown Castle ones?
Maybe, it's been there for a while.
This is much taller than what Crown Castle installed.
It's similar.
It's a, yeah, it's a 78-foot tall wooden, this is a wooden pole.
What's the standard telephone pole?
Forty.
Forty, 35, 40. Almost double.
So, this is more than double?
Almost double, yeah, right at that.
Okay. Good point, yeah, we definitely need to communicate, educate. All right, anything else? What was in the answer earlier? Is it time-sensitive? I'm just wondering, we got a couple more councilmembers, but I'm bound to go ahead now. Do we think a week would, would make a difference on it?
I don't think so.
I just think with Karen, it might be good to have Karen and Joe, I know it's important, Karen and Joe.
I think you can wait till the next Monday's meeting.
I think I prefer that, I think you wait. Okay. Thank you, everybody.